Okay, that passes nine zero. Now is the proper to ask you, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, go ahead and ask.
Okay, I'm asking is it proper to entertain a motion to postpone this resolution until next week? Or should we present first? I'm okay either way.
I think that's up to you. I don't know of any other motion that's pending. Typically, there's a motion to to adopt the resolution, but if a member wants to move to postpone, I think now is appropriate as well.
Point of order, the resolution has not been read yet by title and synopsis.
Okay. So clerk ready? Can we read this by title and synopsis only, please?
Resolution twenty one dash oh one to consolidate committees of the common council. The synopsis is this resolution is offered by council member Volin and consolidates, redefines and dissolves various councils standing committees.
Thank you. Now, what say you, Mr. Lucas?
If there's a motion to postpone now is appropriate to to move that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
I would move to postpone the 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 motion.
Okay, it's been moved. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in a second to postpone Resolution twenty one dash oh one. Do I need a date, Mr. Lucas? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask if if councilmember Sandberg had a specific date in mind that she wanted to propose as part of that motion.
Thank you. I I actually don't. I I think that with some of the previous discussions we've had, both with staff and and with us thinking about this prior to the break. I'm not sure that this is an issue that we need to resolve right away. I think maybe some more thinking needs to be done about it. We have an awful lot on our plate at the start of this new year. And so while I don't have a specific date in mind, could it be left up to the president and the agenda that you traffic control along with the administration to determine when would be the best time to come back and revisit any tweaking or efficiency that we make to the standing committee process?
Point of point of order.
Yes, councilmember P. Smith.
I believe any move, any motion to postpone has to have a date. Otherwise, you could move to table. Mr. Lucas, is that right? My recollection of Robert Sures is already fading.
There, there can be a motion to postpone something indefinitely that I think according to Roberts has the effect of indirectly rejecting the the main motion. So it's, I think, often misused, but.
I don't mean to postpone it indefinitely. I do think a a date could be established. I don't know. Shall we give it a month? But my preference would be to allow the president who determines our agenda to decide when best to take this up again. I agree, we take it up. I just don't know that we need to do it this evening. Mr. President, do you have any feedback for me on when would be a good time?
What my thoughts? I'm looking at the calendar. We have a special session on the thirteenth and then a regular session on the twentieth, and I'm trying to see how many items are there.
I mean, I'm happy to propose a date, and if that's too soon, we can always postpone it again, I suppose.
Well, I'd like to at some point do it sooner than later. It seems to me that, go ahead.
If if you're looking for just sort of a sense of what's coming down down the pike, next week, there's a regular session followed by a committee meeting. And I'm expecting two new items to be introduced at the regular session and then heard at the committee meetings next week and one carryover item from last year that the council didn't actually vote on. That's a Title II ordinance. So there are three items that would be potentially up for discussion at some point next week. Depending on how long those sessions go, it may or may not be a long night, but next next week's regular session would not pose a huge problem, in my opinion.
When you say next week, you mean special session? And then committee meeting?
Regular session, followed by committee.
On the thirteenth. Okay, I'm looking at our calendar. I think it's thought it said special session. I'm fine with that. If you're fine with that, councilmember Sandberg.
And so postpone until the thirteenth? Is that what I'm hearing?
Would that fit, Mr. Lucas, or is it better for the twentieth? We're just looking for a compatible date.
It's up to the council. I I don't see a huge scheduling issue with with that being moved to next week. But again, it's it's what the council.
Okay, councilmember, councilmember Sandberg will be January thirteenth. Go ahead.
If you please restate the motion.
I moved postpone until our special session. Is that a special session on the thirteenth?
Regular session.
Regular session on the thirteenth.
Is there a second?
It's been properly moved in second.
Well, it was revised, so is the second still standing?
And that's my question. Is that are are we postponing presentation or presentation and discussion or?
Introduction. This is a resolution, so it can be discussed and approved on the same evening as I understand it.
Well, it has just been introduced, so we're postponing a discussion and vote, I suppose.
January thirteenth. Yes, ma'am.
So we are proposing a discussion and vote on Resolution twenty one oh one until January thirteenth?
Correct.
Second.
Point of order, is this motion debatable?
I'd have to refer to Mr. Lucas or Mr. Flaherty.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, yes, it's it is debatable.
Has there been a second for the motion as?
It's been properly moved in second. Been properly moved a second. Madam clerk, will you please call the roll?
Excuse me, not debatable? Is the motion not debatable?
Point of order. Point of order. I think, yeah, we just open to council discussion at this point prior to.
Ten four. Thank you. It's now open for debate. Councilmember Volin.
I am very discouraged by this. It's a reasonable offer to reduce the number of committees we have. It's not adding anything new. The presentation will take five minutes. The discussion can be a healthy half hour. I don't think it will take that long. It seems unreasonable. I trust everyone's had a chance to see the proposal. If they have, they'll see that it's a very modest set of changes that I'm not particularly into. And the business that that we have ahead of us, and it will help us decide what committees we're going to each choose from if we have a sense tonight of where we're going. I cannot understand why we would not want to hear this very modest resolution at all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we? Councilmember P. Smith.
Yeah, I also think that it would benefit us to have the conversation this evening. And if, I mean, if it's obvious that, you know, we, there's more questions lingering or there's, you know, amendments that are not ready, then we can postpone the final vote to next week. But I I would like to hear just some discussion on the matter this evening. Standing committees you know, have business already next week, so really I don't, I think we need to make the appointments to standing committees as soon as possible, and that cannot be done if we're not sure what those standing committees will be.
Thank you. Either Mr. Flaherty or Mr. Lucas, if you could clarify something. If there's no decision tonight on that resolution, will the standing committees that they are currently set up still be in place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. I I don't have any objection at all to hearing this presented and hearing a discussion of it tonight. I know that based on what I've read so far, I have a few amendments in mind. And I would just appreciate, it would be helpful to me to hear the discussion, then craft any potential amendments. So those wouldn't be ready till next week from my perspective. So I would appreciate some additional time following discussion tonight to share some thoughts. So, thank you.
Member Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. I think two thoughts. One, I I appreciate what councilmember Scambler just said, and I think maybe that's a reason in order that we should have discussion tonight such that it would be easier to make amendments for next week if if desired and postpone a vote until then. But second is just that I didn't read this resolution. I don't think of it as settling the matter of what we want to do with the structure of committees. I saw it as a couple of minor changes. You know, that that we can implement now to help get us that potentially implement now to to help help us in our assignments, but that we would still revisit the matter in a, you know, broader sense in perhaps a month or two's time from now. So I just wanted to mention that in the sense that if if people had concerns that discussing or passing this resolution now would like preclude further alterations or or changes to committees. That's not where my thinking is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Okay, I too do not have a real issue with debate. I want to postpone the vote. There are some issues. We just, it just came in a packet Friday, and we've looked through it. So I do think a debate would be useful. But I also know that the resolution, or I feel that the resolution, if it were to be voted on tonight, would do some things that I'm not comfortable with without having a chance to study it further, without have an opportunity to amend it, which I'm not prepared to do tonight. I'm not so sure if any of the colleagues are. And that is my comment. So if it's proper to hear the presentation and then vote on postponement, I'm fine with that. Is that proper, Mr. Lucas? Yes.
If that's the will of the council, I would suggest that councilmember Sandberg withdraw her motion or be allowed to withdraw her motion until after the council has engaged in in debate and then reintroduce it after after debate and discussion.
Thank you. I am happy to do so.
Thank you. Motion has been withdrawn. Mr. Volin, are you ready to present? Mr. Volin. I think he's frozen.
I believe he's frozen.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Connection seem to be unstable. Can somebody hold up something shiny? I think I'm, oh dear. I don't know how clearly this is going to come through, but I'm going to share my screen now if it's okay with you, Mr. President.
Yes. It's not up yet.
Councilmember Volin, I don't know if you can see that I've I've gone ahead and shared your slides, and I can scroll through them if that's easier for you. I think you're.
It's better if I show them here.
Oh, yep.
All right.
Yep.
Just one second, please. All right. How about now? No. All right, Mr. Lucas, if you would please share the screen. Okay, it has not been a year since the mayor signed Resolution twenty oh one on March first. But at the December twenty first special session and the discussion of the thorough report compiled by Becky Bustani in the council office about how we use committees throughout the past those first nine and a half months, there were some obvious patterns that were worth reconsidering. In order to establish a committee to be permanent, to remain standing, we have to do that by resolution. Thus, as this is organization day, it's appropriate to take up a resolution in reconsidering our organizational structure. And so I put forward Resolution twenty one oh one. This is a smorgasbord of options that I encourage members to choose from as the majority sees fit. I'm going to go through each option now. I want to stress here that I'm not wedded to any of them in particular. The only way to make changes is if we have proposals in writing. Can we go to the next slide? Can you see it? I can't see Mr. Lucas's screen anymore.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so you know, the primary function of committees was to be legislation. Committees being new in twenty twenty, the initial set best guess. Mr. Lucas, I don't, I I can't see your screen.
We're on slide number two.
Right, I, but I I can't see if it's just a minute, please. There we go. Some committees had no legislation referred to them. Last year, the initial set of communities that we created last year was the best guess because we were best basing it on how much legislation we'd had in previous years. So that's how we determine the number and the scope of each initial committee on the legislative record of the prior term. Secondarily, we know that committees have the function of oversight and they do research. Again, oversight as in referees, not as in bosses. It's our statutory duty to be a check on the executive. We are a separate branch of government for a reason. But it's also the appropriate way to look into issues when legislation isn't pending. And it's also appropriate for handling nominations to boards and commissions because those committees feature members who are specializing in the topics of those boards and commissions handle. Next slide, please. So the first option would eliminate the housing committee and merge its portfolio of responsibilities into the land use committee. There were no hearings called by the housing committee last year, and there was no legislation referred to it. So this is a pretty elementary change. It's not to say that we shouldn't in committee, but it is unlikely that we're going to have legislation referred to it as, basically speaking, the hand department rarely brings legislation to us. So the these are issues that might be easily managed by another committee. Land use is the most relevant to housing. The second option would eliminate the Climate Action Resilience Committee. The obligations of this committee would be merged into the Sustainable Development Committee. This proposes to rename it Sustainability Climate Action and Resilience, which was the original proposal in Resolution twenty oh one. Again, I'm not wedded to this idea. These two committees received no legislation in twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Option three would fold the Utilities and Sanitation Committee into Community Affairs. Utilities, again, rarely has legislation. We saw one item last year or at least one pair of items, same meeting, and Community Affairs is the most general committee, though default when there's no more specific committee to refer items to. Community Affairs also handles many nominations to boards and commissions, and so adding the Utility Service Board won't hurt it. Option four may perhaps be the most controversial item here. It eliminates the sidewalk committee. Now, this is not to say that it eliminates direct council influence over the sidewalk fund. That would take a different action. But we do have a transportation committee now, and that is the point of sidewalks, transportation. It's a big part of what planning and transportation does, and they staff the committee. But we've also seen a recent report that perhaps our decisions may not have been the most equitable over the years in allocating sidewalk funds. And planning and transportation staff thinks that it would be fair to not subject sidewalks to this kind of process. It does consume a lot of staff time. So this, the fourth thing that this would do would be to eliminate sidewalk. Whether we actually give the authority to allocate sidewalk funds to planning and transportation or to simply merge the sidewalk committee with the transportation committee, I leave up to the majority. Next slide, please. Option five basically strikes the word funding from the title of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee. It will still do what it's always done. It'll make recommendations to the Hopkins Fund. But this basically elevates it to a full standing committee that can receive other legislation and take up issues not the subject of legislation. In particular, many of the issues raised tonight on homelessness all under the category of emergency social services, most that term, most of which is already in the title of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee. So simply striking funding and this resolution strikes the word funding and and gives it the portfolio to consider emergency social services. It's unlikely that it'll get other legislation, but it is a vehicle for us to 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 take further action by creating it. The final thing that this resolution does is a bit of housekeeping. It's a minor change that locates the new CAPS Commission under the Public Safety Committee so that we know who will take point for naming the members of that commission and oversee its progress. Again, this reflects the a common understanding of which council committee would oversee it would be the Public Safety Committee. Finally, again, this is a buffet of options. No option is dependent on any other. None of them is preferred. If members don't like a provision, it's fairly easy actually tonight to strike. Is it to to amend this with simple strike throughs? The resolution has been designed so that all you have to do is strike the section and the, like, for example, you could strike section three and and section and paragraph four C to eliminate the change that section three calls for. So final slide, please. Here is what our committee system would look like if Resolution twenty one oh one is adopted. We have eleven committees now, two of which are in parentheses, they're funding committees only. The the animation that I was going to have here, I have to walk through myself. The housing committee you see would be included in land use and stricken. The Climate Action and Resilience Committee would be stricken and put into sustainability or the Sustainable Development Committee. Utilities and sanitation would be moved into community affairs. We would strike the word funding from Hopkins and make it into a full committee. And we would strike the sidewalk committee. So for this resolution, if all the changes are adopted, we might have as few as seven standing committees. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm sorry for the technical trouble. I'm happy to entertain questions.
Thank you for your presentation, sir. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thanks. I have two questions. Under section one, the land use and housing committee being funded, you also include in their portfolios, so to speak, parks and recreation and the park commission. Could you talk a little bit about your thinking as to why parks would fit under land use and housing?
I I don't recall intending to change the portfolios of existing committees. That may be an error. I I have forgotten which committee oversees parks. But all I did was move whatever commit, whatever responsibilities the housing committee had under land use, but I might have cut and pasted from a an incorrect draft. So I don't recall, but I had no intention of changing what was already there with respect to parks.
Thank you. And may I follow up with one more question?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure if the thing that falls under discussion, which is tonight and next week, but but I'll just ask that. I would be interested at some point in hearing from the committee chairs of committees affected by this proposal, what they think, you know, does it make sense to combine some portfolios or not? So at some point, I would be interested in hearing from those individuals. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from other council members? Councilmember P. Smith.
Yeah, so I'm my question is about the sidewalk committee and moving that to the transportation standing committee. You you mentioned that if we wanted to change how the alternative transportation fund was allocated for sidewalk projects, that would take a different motion of the council? Is that, could you explain that?
Right, the only thing that this resolution does is that eliminates the sidewalk committee. It does not act, it's silent on the question of whether or not the fund should be overseen by the Transportation Committee or the Planning and Transportation Department. Again, the the purpose of tonight, like, committees can only be created or abolished by resolution, and that's the only type of action of, I mean, I, if, you know, if I wanted to make ordinance changes, that would be a more appropriate for the first regular session of the year rather than organization day. So I I'm I don't have an opinion on that what that should be. I'm simply offering this as an option if people see fit to do it.
Right, I understand that, but as an experienced council member and parliamentarian, can you tell me what step would be required if we wanted to change the way the sidewalk funding was allocated?
You know, if the if the majority saw fit to have it be done by transportation, that could be done by resolution like this. I did not propose that here because I felt that it was something that, I mean, I don't mean for the sidewalk committee to be abolished immediately, and this is actually something I discussed with Mr. Lucas because they're going through their process now. I meant for this to take effect after sidewalk committee did their work for this year, which is going to wrap up in early February, I think, late January. So, you know, I'm agnostic about it, but and and I'm happy to add. I mean, if it, Mr. Lucas, actually, did did we add that clause in the drafting that said that it'll postpone it to a certain date for the abolition of sidewalk?
I'm checking now.
But I mean, while he's checking that, you know, just say for the record that.
Yes, it's in the, it's in the legislation.
Yeah, okay, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't abolish till after this, this, this current sidewalk committee's done with its work. But it it doesn't actually take the next step and say that it should go to transportation. You know, I take seriously the report that we heard about the perhaps inequitable allocation of sidewalk funds. And I think that that's something for further discussion. But we'll have time to think about it over the next year because this won't have an effect until maybe December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Okay. Councilmember Sandberg.
I did hear a request from councilmember Scambler to hear from the chairs of the various standing committees. Is this appropriate to do now or save this for the postponed discussion?
Did you say a point of order? Yes. Yes.
So when we come back to, after, we, we should go to public comment and when we come back from public comment. We have debate, which means that members can speak twice to an issue. That seems to be the appropriate time for. Chairs of any given committee to, to speak, but if Councilmember Sandberg would like to hear that discussion sooner.
As, as a, President Sims, if I may, as a.
Councilmember Flaherty, yes, great.
I think it's an interesting question. As a counterpoint. I think chairs. Of each committee giving their thoughts or initial thoughts about the proposal. Is somewhat analogous to staff giving its opinion about a proposal, for instance. So I think it could. Perhaps we should have done it before asking questions, but I think it could fit, you know, more or less neatly into the presentation. Stage of discussion and is perhaps an okay way to go if there are no objections. It seems different in kind than council debate in some ways, so.
Okay. And when you say Councilmember Flaherty, if it's the wish of the council, what, what does that mean?
I guess it's my opinion as parliamentarian that this fits within logically within presentation. It, it wouldn't be each. And I suppose the logical conclusion of that would be if each chair wanted to say something about the proposal as it affects their. The committee they are chairing, then that would also open up. Council questions that could be asked of, of those chairs. About the, about their thoughts. And that would just become part of our discussion on the. Overall presentation of the resolution and, and council question prior to going to any public comment.
Okay, thank you. I would ask you as parliamentarian, it was also alluded to that staff. Had some. Input on this already in that they would prefer. That it not be part of the sidewalk, council sidewalk committee as well, and maybe move to something else. So would that be proper as well in addition to committee chairs? Do we have staff people here to speak on that?
I don't think. That we have invited any.
Necessarily.
Yeah, I don't think we've invited any staff, you know, from planning and transportation, for instance, to comment on the resolution.
No, I get that, but it's been referred to as staff feels that it should be different. So would that not be as, just as appropriate as? And not trying to limit anything, I just want to be as inclusive as possible and I think would be. Equally important in my mind. Councilmember Volan, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I don't have anything to add, actually.
I was just gonna say that, I mean, I, while staff, administration staff were not invited. This evening to speak on this issue. I based that portion of the resolution on the written opinion of staff, so. I, I believe that I've reflected their opinion. But, you know. They're, they're not here to, to address it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, Mr. President. What were you talking about when you said staff expressed an opinion about sidewalk? I, that I totally did not get that.
And the presenter's proposal. I don't have to find it, but he alluded to the fact that the, I'm sorry. That planning and transportation staff and several council members believe that the sidewalk fund should be allocated by staff instead of the council sidewalk committee process.
Oh, is that in his memo?
Yes, or.
Okay.
I was consolidating some commits, some committees, yes. While I take no position on America's idea, I've included it in the resolution for the sake of discussion. And my only question is that if it's brought up here, would it not be proper to actually hear from staff? As well as committee chairs?
I don't think you're wrong, Council President Sims, that.
Again, I'm just asking, I don't, at this point, don't know if it's right or wrong. It just seems logical and proper. But go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you.
No, that, that's all. I, I don't think you're wrong. I think they could have been invited to, to share that opinion. I think Councilmember Volan expressed his view that. It reflects, you know, a previous written opinion. And of course, you know, as with any section of this, it could be, it could be struck if needed, but, but I think, I don't think your opinion is, is. Off base. I just don't think it would be included tonight as part of the presentation because staff has not been invited.
Okay, I would also add that as one of four members of the council sidewalk committee. I don't recall in any meeting hearing that from any of our staff. I don't want to speak for any of the other committees, council sidewalk committee members. But that's why I was wanting to hear it because I've not heard that before from staff in any of our committee meetings. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I, I would agree that since staff did not, staff did not have an invitation to come tonight. But they could, if they wish to speak to any change in the current system, they have that opportunity on the 13th. If we are approving the motion to postpone at that time. One last point is as the Chair of Jack Hopkins, I'm happy to go first. If we want to entertain that, I'll be very, very brief.
Can I before?
Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Sorry, before we hear from. Councilmember Sandberg as Chair of that committee, I wanted to just, I think it. Citing, when Council President Sims cited the memo from Councilmember Volan. I went back and, and read it, read that paragraph and I think it actually casts confusion on the whole. Discussion this evening because it says that. It implies that he included. In the resolution that sidewalk funds should be allocated by staff and that is actually not part of the resolution. So I don't know if that was a. Previous draft of the memo or what, but I just want to clarify, it's not part of the resolution.
Yeah, it's not part of the resolution.
I'm just seeking clarity because that is used as part of to dissolve the council sidewalk committee. And I'm on that committee and three of the four of us. Do not have that desire, so I'm just seeking clarity. Which has been expressed in committee or council sidewalk committee meetings. So I just was seeking clarity as part of this discussion and I'm. Assuming that's proper, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I think, though if it's okay with you at this time, it would be appropriate to hear from any chair of a committee who would wish to. Share their thoughts or reactions to the legislation.
I think that's. Let me get a list so we can go down the list.
You'll find it in the, the meeting memo released before the meeting with the organization daily worksheet on it.
I, I think. Is administration considered part of that, Mr. Volan? So we can start with the administration standing committee. And that, is that not?
Are you going to go through each committee to ask that question or just the committees that are affected?
I thought I just heard about each committee chair. Is that what we're, is that not what we're asking?
I'm just saying the administration committee isn't changing under this proposal, so I have no opinion from that perspective.
I'll clarify, I, I did.
Just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I did declare, I did mean just the committees affected, so we could go down the list alphabetically and, and only. Consult the chairs of any committee affected by the, the resolution. Sorry if I was unclear on that point.
Okay, so then I'm clear. In order to ask the committee chairs to speak, are, we're talking housing is one?
Yes, going.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And thank you, I think I've got it now. Councilmember Sandberg, you said you wanted to as Chair of Jack Hopkins?
Yes, I'm happy to. Accept the elevation of Jack Hopkins into a full committee and with perhaps additional things referred to it. In addition to our typical funding responsibilities. No problem with those changes.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, would you care to speak on the council sidewalk committee?
Committee, sure. I, you know, this is, I just took over as Chair of the sidewalk committee. And just was getting my head wrapped around it. And I think there's. There's ideas for, there's pros for eliminating it. There's cons for eliminating it. And so. At this point, I feel like I would vote to retain the sidewalk committee.
Okay, thank.
That's, that's my opinion.
Councilmember Flaherty, if I may get some clarification. Councilmember Smith is the new Chair of the council sidewalk committee. This is what your first meeting was the last time as Chair? Yes, second. Is it proper, me as the immediate past Chair of that committee, is it proper for me to comment?
I would suggest perhaps we restrict the presentation reactions to, to the current chairs of each committee and there would be, of course, ample time during council debate to, to share your views on.
That's fine, I'll, I'll share it in debate or final comment. Thank you very much. Okay. Chair of Utilities and Sanitation?
Councilmember Rallo.
Okay.
Yeah, Utilities Standing Committee. I, you know, I'm happy to have any other members speak to this. I'm more processing at this point, so I don't really have any. Comments regarding this, this point.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess we're moving to the Chair of the. Climate Action and Resilience Committee?
That is me. Generally speaking, I'm okay with and in favor of, of consolidating this with other aspects of sustainable development or sustainability. As Councilmember Volan noted, the Climate Action Resilience Committee. Met around essentially two issues this year. One was around the lit proposal and one was around. Hearing an early draft of the forthcoming climate action plan. These were non-legislative issues and certainly while climate remains an important. You know, a topic for the city and for the council. Most of the legislative items that might apply or have some meaning, whether it's utilities or land use or transportation related. Are going to have another logical standing committee that they would go to. And so for that reason, I, I thought. That, that it may make sense, or I feel that it may make sense to consolidate it with other aspects of sustainability under that umbrella. So that's my initial reaction.
Thank you. Housing Standing Committee Chair, Councilmember Rosenberg.
I'm, I have mixed feelings about moving housing into land use. I think I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we have a place in 2021 to talk about. Housing and homelessness and I think if land use becomes land use and. Housing that that, that is okay to be that place. I just want to make sure it's like clear that, you know, there's a, there's a place for that to happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan. I'm sorry, where are you, I'm sorry, where are you done? Councilmember Rosenberg?
I was just going to say as Chair of Transportation Committee, I was just gonna do both mine at once, I have two. I'm okay with absorbing the sidewalk committee.
That was my point, Mr. President, is that we should also ask the chairs of the committees that would receive obligations. So that would be. Transportation, Community Affairs, Land Use and Sustainable Development. Thank you.
I do think that would be in order.
Okay, just so I'm clear, list those again for me, Councilmember Volan.
So.
I thought that's what I was trying to do in the first place.
Oh, I didn't know.
Now, that's what I was trying to do 20 minutes ago.
From the Chair of Land Use about the taking in of housing. We need to hear from the Chair of Sustainable Development for the taking in of climate action. We need to hear from the Community Affairs Chair about taking in utilities. And we've already heard from the Chair of Hopkins about social services. But I think that's it. Oh, and then their transportation committee about taking in sidewalk, we've already heard Councilmember Rosenberg say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair of the Land Use Committee, do you care to input, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yes, I. I don't think it's a good idea to combine housing with land use committee. The land use committee is very focused on things that come out of the Plan Commission. And things that are about. The use of land, obviously. Housing does use land and of course, a lot of development petitions are for residential development. But. In. In a time when. Homelessness in Bloomington and housing in Bloomington is in crisis, I really feel strongly we should not eliminate the housing committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Sustainable Development, Councilmember Scambolari.
Thank you. And I actually is the one who started this tradition of, or practice of asking chairs. Sustainability or sustainable development is one of the committees I wondered about. And merging in climate action and resilience and kind of combining all of those. May, may well make sense, but I'm wondering if it would, it would dilute what we are trying to do, particularly in climate action. Most of what we did this year focused on economic development and responding to the COVID crisis and the rapid recovery loans and so forth. And maybe this is a question for Councilmember Flaherty, are, are we at all concerned, and by we having you. Are we at all concerned about diluting or, or weakening our focus on climate? I always kind of appreciated having a group of hardcore people who know a ton about that issue and being able to go to them. Am I overly concerned, do you think, or?
I'm gonna pass on the question, I'll, I'll. But I'll just leave it to chairs responding for now.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do believe I'm.
I'm the Chair of the Community.
Community Affairs, Councilmember Smith, thank you. I was looking at my notes.
That's okay. I, I think it's fine that it, it is combined. We really didn't. Have, have much to do as far as any kind of legislation. So I don't think that's a problem at all to do that. So. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now I do believe, do we have any more questions before we go to public comment? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I have another question for, or a question for Councilmember Volan. I think. Well, if we, if we. We were expecting a motion perhaps to postpone a vote on, on this and to hear any amendments until the 13th. And I'm wondering how you would imagine Councilmember Volan. Committee assignments interacting with that timeline, in particular. If we, if we submit, you know, committee preferences to the president. By Friday, say, and committees are assigned by next Wednesday and then we quickly. Change two or three of them, that might affect sort of the number of assignments each person has and or how they would have ranked their choices. Do you have thoughts on how to handle that better or, yeah, just thoughts?
Good question. So again, if this resolution were proposing adding committees, I think it'd be much more problematic. The decision is simpler before us is should we reduce some? There are 11 right now, two which are funding committees. And so that's basically. You know, I can't do math anymore, almost five seats for every member. If you count. We, we generally not counted sidewalk before, but it really does count. So I called for everyone to put down their five choices. I think that's still. You know, valid, but I think they should do so this week, keeping in mind that some of them might go away. If council decides to postpone to the 13th. My concern tonight wasn't about, I mean, if the council doesn't want to vote on it tonight, that's understandable. I just was concerned about being able to present it tonight, but. I think that the only thing I might suggest is that members put down their top six choices. Because some of them might go by the wayside and the president's not going to be able to give everybody all their top choices. Last year, I asked. Last year I asked for five, you know, choices and I gave everybody their top three. And ironically, no one got their fourth choice. I don't know how that worked out, but literally no, I could not give anybody their fourth choice and balance the committees. So, you know, but I think that the president should be able to guarantee at least every member's top two choices. And he should be able to do the top three without there being much conflict of any. But in order to give him the best options, we should probably put down our ranker top six choices. But that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem for me if we decided to postpone to the 13th. But I think everyone should still submit their choices anyway, as if nothing will change.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Don't we have committee meetings immediately following the regular session next week? So.
That's why.
Kind of hard to plot.
Yeah.
Plan ahead, but.
I still think the choices are pretty straightforward, so.
That's true. And that's why I asked Mr. Lucas if the previous committees would still be functioning while we're deciding on these. So good point, councilmember Pete Mount Smith. Yes, Mr. Lucas? Or did you have anything? Okay.
No, that's, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sorry, another follow up in the related vein, this one perhaps for Mr. Lucas. If, if we decide to postpone a vote on this resolution to the 13th, might it make sense for the council president to wait on assigning committees for this year until after that vote happens as well? Even though we initially anticipated perhaps assigning committees this week? Do you see a problem with that in terms of anything regarding our organization and? How we conduct business?
And so if the council were to vote on resolution 21, 2101 next Wednesday, would there be an issue until with the president assigning members to the committees after that vote?
Correct. Wait, waiting until after that vote occurs to assign committees for this year.
Assuming any of those standing committees are meeting next Wednesday, which again, there's one carryover item from last year. There are two items that the council may want to refer to standing committees next week. Members should be, I suppose, flexible in their schedule to, to learn whether they're going to be on any of the committees that hear any items next week, if any are referred to a standing committee. I realize it's, it's a kind of hard to plan in advance, but.
I guess my question part, like, do we run into challenges with, I'm not recalling, for instance, exactly how the initial resolutions introducing standing committees were structured? If the makeup of each committee automatically dissolved at the end of the year, for instance, or if we can consider it continuing on through next week, for instance, before making committee assignments for this year? Are we running into some sort of problem with, with code or our previous resolution was sort of what I was getting at? Does anyone?
Let me pull up our code and maybe you can come back to me if, if you give me just a couple of seconds.
Point of order.
Yes. Councilmember Volan.
The, I've forgotten it, so I'll defer to.
Remember Sandberg.
Well, the mayor did not sign approval of these standing committees until February, so technically don't we have a few more months?
Councilmember Volan.
The mayor signed it on March 1st. We used our first committee, I think, on the 6th of March. The, I mean, my take, I remember my point of order now, which was that I think that until the president names new committee assignments, the old ones continue and that it's safe for us to just, you know, if admin is meeting next week, then it's the same committee until the president names new members. I think we might need a motion to postpone the naming of, of, of new committees. But I'm not sure about, I'll defer to Mr. Lucas on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking at our code now. It, it doesn't actually refer to a specific term length for committees. I'm, certainly the council's past practice has been to treat committee assignments as an annual, an annual term. Perhaps this is a, is an ambiguity that should be addressed in the future, but our code does not refer to a one-year term, but that's certainly been the practice.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Councilmember Rallo.
Mr. Lucas, could we not, just not, well, could we resolve this by simply having motion to the council this evening to maintain the current appointments to the standing committees, the current standing committees until this matter is resolved?
Our, our code provides that the presiding officer of the council appoints at least three council members to any standing committee that's established by the council. I, I think the council president could essentially maintain the current committee assignments until such time as, as new committees are created or abolished.
Does that need to be stated at a public meeting? Does President Sims, could he essentially declare that this evening and therefore, and that would resolve this matter?
I think so, yes. President may want to see if.
I was going to say I could, but I think this might be about the third time is what I refer to that, which is exactly what you just said, councilmember Rallo. I was asking about until these new structure could be decided, would the existing standing committees operate until such time? But I'd be happy to make some sort of statement if that would clarify things.
Yeah, it sounds like you were, you were, President Sims, you were, you were asking, there was a question. Perhaps you need to make a declarative that as president of the council that we should maintain this, the current makeup of, of the committees until this matters, you know, voted on, resolved.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sen, did you have anything, councilmember Sandberg? No, councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, I just, I, it's not really a question, I'm sorry, but, okay, I'll make it a question. So, um, the legislation that will be referred to standing committees that will meet in, on next Wednesday, the 13th. If the standing committees are then changed after Wednesday, the 13th, and there's a second hearing of that standing committee of that piece of legislation, then we will have potentially new members of that standing committee coming in to only hear the second discussion of that piece of legislation. How would we resolve that issue?
Is that to question directed to?
Mr. Volan.
Councilmember Volan, councilmember Volan.
Well, first I want to say that I don't think the president has to take any action to leave committees as they are with the assignments that they have, that, you know, he can simply announce that he's postponing his decision to reassign people until this matter is resolved. I don't have a problem in principle to having the committee stay the same for the legislation that it hears if it goes to a second hearing. I think it's unlikely, but you know, I, I don't think there's going to be that much legislation next week. From what I recall, it's, it's nothing particularly out of the ordinary. And one of the items is actually a holdover from December, so it's already in its second hearing. So I think that this is perhaps a problem that we can, you know, not worry about. I'm not worried about it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any further questions from council? Councilmember Volan.
So I'd like to reiterate what I've heard tonight. I, I hear qualms about getting rid of climate. I hear qualms about getting rid of housing. And I get here qualms like.
Yes, that's a question, sir.
Yeah, I'm asking the council question. I want to know, I'm hearing.
You asking the entire council?
I, I guess I want somebody to.
Councilmember Flaherty.
To, I think it would be appropriate, councilmember Volan, to ask perhaps chairs of, of individual committees affected by this legislation, questions related to their comments about how their committee may be affected. The committee they chair may be affected by the legislation, but in terms of general questions to the council and their thoughts, I think it would be more appropriate for, for debate.
Well, as the, the maker of the motion, as the sponsor of the resolution, I'm simply reacting in general to what I've heard. I hear that climate, housing and sidewalk people are skeptical about. And I just wanted to say in general, again, as a sponsor of the resolution, that it wouldn't bother me at all if we simply struck those tonight and passed the rest, consolidate utilities, elevate.
Again, Mr. Volan.
Yes.
I do, I do think this is appropriate for a debate, summarizing your, you know, what you've heard tonight and suggesting potential alternatives. We'll, we'll get to it. I, I just think it's appropriate after public comment when we come back to.
I'll, I'll close with a point of order that I, I, you know, make sponsors of legislation can react to what they've heard. But I'm happy to defer until debate. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions from councilmembers? Okay, and before, or seeing them, before we proceed to public comment, I will entertain what councilmember Rallo says. And as the new president of this council, which was my understanding, is that existing standing committees will continue to operate until such time that these new committees are formed and then staffed. Is that, is that what you're looking for, councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I think that makes it clear.
Clear.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
If Mr. Lucas is that, it, it could, we have Mr. Lucas's opinion just to make sure that.
Yes.
That this does the job.
Yes, I, I think so. And again, whatever changes are made in the future, the president will, will need to make adjustments based on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan, have a question.
Yes, the, the point I was trying to make earlier was really a point of order. The reason I was asking for the summary is because if we go to debate without an opportunity to amend it, you know, it, I, I was trying to point out that if members have qualms rather than postponing to next week, if someone were to make a motion to amend to strike the climate change, the housing change and the sidewalk change, we could adopt the other changes and not even take it up next week. We'll simply have a couple, you know, a couple of minor changes that nobody disagrees with and it's fine. So that's why I wanted to intervene here is I want to encourage people to amend it. Thank you.
Can I ask what your question is, councilmember Volan?
My question is, does anyone have an interest in amending it? I'm not that wedded to this language. I would rather see us consolidate utilities, elevate Hopkins and put caps in its right place than do nothing.
And since you asked a question, I'll try to answer it. I think that was part of the purpose of, of postponing it for a while because some, there may be some intentions of doing amending. And I'm not so sure that tonight was the proper time. So that was the whole point with that. Any other councilmember Flaherty?
Just as a response to councilmember Volan's point of order, I appreciate that. He's right and I apologize for, it would be proper if someone wanted to make an amendment to the resolution to do so now, but.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing now we'll go to the public for public comment. Those that are present and want to comment on resolution 21-01, please indicate by using the raised hand function in Zoom or to send us a notice in chat. And Mr. Lucas will recognize you. And we'll have, how many do it look like we have? Are we still have five minutes, correct? Yes.
I, I see one hand raised and I have two messages over the chat that folks would like to comment. So I, I think I saw Alex Goodlad first. And he should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
And Mr. Goodlad.
So it seems like the city council is going to, I guess, vote on the way that the committees are rearranged later. And I think that's a good idea and I, I don't really, I, I'm, I didn't quite follow exactly how the process works. So forgive me if like I'm not quite understanding, but I, from my, so it, it seems like Volan wants to amend it in, in, with the understanding that, that you don't vote, like that the amendments don't affect, don't change anything when it, when it's officiated next week. That's what I would hope would happen because because I've, we've been, you know, watching the meeting, like me and some others. And I guess what kind of we feel is that we would, we would like more consideration on whether the caps meeting or, sorry, the caps committee is, is dissolved and put in public safety. I guess I, I kind of feel weird about it and I know others do who might raise their hand and also comment. And then I, I want to express the importance of two other committees or, or two other issues in general, I think, that should be prioritized in the committee, and that is climate. So I think that, I know there was an issue back in 2019 going into 2020 about the climate committee being like, or what should have been the climate committee being dissolved into, I think, the economic and planning committee, something like that. And I, I would very much encourage the climate committee staying its own committee because we have a climate catastrophe and, you know, needs to be treated as such. And, and then, and, and I think it's important, you know, regarding the encampment issue, not to get too much into that again. But I, I think that it's, in terms of like prioritizing housing first, we really need the committees, however it's formed. I know that there is a bunch of spitballing of ideas as to how you put, you know, the issue of seminary and housing first with the committees. But I, I would strongly recommend prioritizing those in the way committees are arranged. Thanks. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Goodland. Mr. Lucas, want to read those two statements and we'll go to whoever's got their hands up. If that's your preference.
Well, it was just a request to comment that came over chat from Mark Stossberg is next. And he should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Stossberg, you have five minutes. Yes.
Well, yes, I'm the author of the sidewalk equity audit that recommended the dissolution of the sidewalk committee. And I think many of you have read that. Thank you. It was not an opinion piece, but a very data-driven analysis. And the recommendation had to do with the political influence of the, the city council on how that had led to the data we found of inequity in sidewalk funding. And the recommendation didn't have to do with whether it was named the sidewalk committee or the transportation committee. It was about moving to an objective process, which is what the city staff is already demonstrating they are doing. So I'm just restating that, that the recommendation, if we want to achieve equity, we can't just rename the committee. We do need to move to an objective process, which I believe that the staff is prepared to lead us in. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. What do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next, I received a comment from Dave Askins with the B-Square Beacon. And his comment is, here's a quote from councilmember Scambler from last year's work session on this topic that I think is worth remembering. Quote, "One of the things we're still missing or one piece of this puzzle that where I would love to find a way to gather feedback from the public about this. My guess is there will be many members of the public who care less, not at all, about whether we have committees or don't have committees or whatever. But for those who were impacted by this, who do care, who care deeply about an opportunity to comment on an issue, I'd like to see us find a way to invite public comment on that or public feedback on committees as well." End quote. And I also received a comment from Kathy Crabtree that she's asked me to read. Kathy says, "I think that the new committee should be determined and after that, the new assignment should be made. Doesn't make sense for council members to put in the committees that they want to serve on until they know what committees." Doesn't make sense for council members to put in the committees that they want to serve on until they know what committees that are going to exist." And that is Kathy's comment. And I believe that I do see one, one other hand raised from Crazy Jana, and I'm reading the screen name and not calling this individual crazy, so please go ahead.
Hey, guys, so.
Hey, Ms. Jana, before we get started, can you give us your full name, please?
Yeah, so this is J. Arthur, and I'm experienced, I'm experiencing homelessness. I've been living in seminary since a little before Christmas, and I have some real different life experiences. I apologize if I cuss. I'm doing my best, but I'm a whole different person now. I have a family, and if you guys would like to hear about what living outside in December is like, my mom and dad are here with me and like I'm going to let them speak. I'm going to yield my time.
Ms. Jana or Jana Arthur, I'm sorry. Do you have comments on this resolution that we're addressing now?
Yeah, so can dude, I have not been keeping up. What are you guys talking about? We have all the comments, but we've been a little behind. What are we discussing, Mr. Sims?
Discussing Resolution 21 oh one, and it has to do with establishing or recreating standing committees. There will be time, I think, for additional public comment after our next item.
And we can only speak on one thing because I was really passionate about the cap.
You could speak on something that is not on the agenda at the end of or toward the end of the meeting.
Okay, we would like to speak on both of them. Okay, we would also like to speak about the the caps committee because I was under the impression that that would be what safety is like for us. So it, would you like to hear someone talk about what safety is like for us because it's relevant to these commitments?
Well, it would be proper toward the end.
Okay, we'll, we'll speak later.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Yes. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Hey, sir.
No.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. We will return to council for final comment. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I need to correct some very incorrect assumptions about this legislation. It does not, I repeat, does not do anything to the Caps Commission, which was created by ordinance. It simply gives the Public Safety Committee of the City Council the authority to appoint members to it. This was something that was in the Caps Commission ordinance. This is a very minor change that does not affect the Caps Commission at all. Let's be clear about that, number one. Number two, the this this ordinance or this rather, this resolution is not about establishing or reconsidering standing committees as a whole. It's about consolidating some of them. It's not, we're not, it's not in creating new ones. It may shrink the the total pool that we have. I, the, it was meant to be quick and dirty so that it could be decided in one night. It was based on feedback that I got from the meeting in December 21st, which, again, I thought was a bit premature for revisiting committees, but one of the messages I heard was that, well, we should start the new year having rethought them. So I rethought them and I made this resolution. Okay. Again, I want to encourage people, it's not too late to move to amend. Again, I don't, I don't have a problem with it if it goes to next week. But I also don't think that we need to worry about, again, we can just leave. We don't have to do anything to continue as we have been. We're simply, except maybe a motion to postpone the naming or the assigning of seats on committees until this legislation is is addressed. But I just urge everyone to not read more into it than there is. These are very simple things that are based on feedback that I got from council members, from my colleagues. So, you know, I would really like to hear from some people, you know, the merits of any given section of it. If you feel strongly or not about the housing committee continuing to exist, whether you're on the committee or not, please say so. But like, I I need that feedback for one. I think all of us could benefit from the feedback. Please comment on each part of it if you can. I just, but I just want to make sure that people understand that the cats commission is a very, it's, it's, this is not affecting the cap question at all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further final comments from council members? Councilmember Pete Moss Smith.
Well, since my colleague has asked for feedback, I will provide some. I already mentioned that I think the housing committee ought to remain in place. I also think that the Climate Action and Resilience Committee should remain and not be combined with the Sustainable Development Commission, I mean, Sustainable Development Standing Committee. Because climate action is such a huge priority that we as human beings must must take very seriously. And, you know, just because there wasn't legislation referred to it doesn't mean that it is not a committee that should be very active and perhaps, you know, implementation of the soon to be adopted Climate Action Plan could be a priority. Utilities and sanitation folding into community affairs, that's fine. We might think of another name for that committee then, because I don't think of sanitation as community affairs really. So we can think about that. Eliminating the sidewalk committee, moving it to transportation, yes, and I consider that the first step in getting rid of the council's influence and handing out sidewalk funding because I agree with Mr. Stossberg's analysis that this should not be a city council issue. It should be a staff-driven objective issue. Section five, Jack Hopkins, that's good. I think that should be a full committee. And section six was making it clear that appointments to the Caps Commission will be made by the Public Safety Committee. That's fine. Although, since three out of four members of the Public Safety Committee voted against the creating the Caps Commission, I that does give me pause, but I rely on my colleagues that they will certainly commit to what we've now passed as a majority of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pete Moss. Councilmember Rosenberg.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments. One is about the climate committee. I am on that and I I'm in support of getting rid of it, not because I think we shouldn't have a climate group in some way, but something that happened this last year multiple times is that multiple members of that committee wanted to attend meetings that we could not all attend because that would have been a quorum. And we would have, I guess, had to notice that and and it would have been public. So we one other idea, I guess, would just be to change the members, and I could always leave that committee, but I think in my mind, I mean, of course, I think climate is incredibly important, and it might just make sense to create task forces sometimes that study specific topics, I think, and give give opinions or ideas. I don't necessarily know that it has to be merged at all with the Sustainable Development Committee. I'm up for discussion, I guess, on other ideas there, just like if it is something that we could look at creating task forces for it. Sorry, I already said that, but so I'm either up for changing membership there, and I know we're all going to make preferences, or just, yeah, doing something there with task forces. The sidewalk committee, I am on that committee, and I'm the member that thinks it should be dissolved. I think over the years, like the data show, it's been very inequitable. Being on two meetings, it takes incredible staff time from the administration. I think there's anywhere from 10 to 20 staffers on those calls, so it's just a lot of of staff time. And I think this is the equivalent of, you know, having council decide which street should be repaved in a year, and I think that is something most everyone here would agree that we should never do. So I'm okay putting that into Transportation Committee where every other aspect of transportation is housed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President Volan. So I appreciate the week to think about what what's been proposed here and to probably make some amendments to it, and it's something I had to think, I have to think about, and then I want to craft something to talk with our attorney about and then put forth some amendments. I'll, I'll tell you that it also gives me time at this juncture to be thinking about our process. So the things that come out, and I'm thinking out loud with you all, it's part of the process of transparency is maybe we need a committee, an additional committee, maybe we need a committee on homelessness. Maybe we need also a committee on finance related to the budget so that we have ongoing discussions on these two really important topics. I'm not implying that we're taking away functions that the city's already doing, but it then will give us a forum to be able to discuss these things. And so those are two things that popped into my head while we were talking and when I read the proposal prior to our meeting tonight. I also wanted to bring up the, I think it's the elephant in the room, is that if we, I was transparent with when I had spoken to a few of you about committees and whether I think standing committees are good or bad, and I didn't have much to compare it to. So what I, what I want to say is if we're going to, you know, in my mind, we would follow the executive leadership of the council. If if we're not going to have standing committees in the future, then maybe what we're doing is all this is moot. And maybe we want to construct in the next month a way to transition away from that. And I'm not telling you that I think I know what's the best because I don't have a comparison. I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't there at the council the whole. However, I think it's a fair point to say that in our, in our thinking about it for the next week or the next two weeks, whatever, however, we do come to this conclusion of this, I, I think that's something else that is in my mind about thinking about what we're doing. I want a good process. I believe in the council and in what we're doing. I want a good process, whichever way goes, but I think that's fruit for thought, food for thought at this point. Thank you. Those are my final comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Volan for bringing these ideas and and members of the public for your comments. Just to reiterate again, the the point this attempts to resolve with the Caps Commission is just to clarify which council committee oversees it. All of our boards and commissions are overseen by a various committee. You know, Commission on Sustainability, for instance, is under the Climate Action Committee, so it just clarifies where that's placed. That's it. I agree with Councilmember Volan that there's some uncontroversial things here, it sounds like. For instance, dissolving utilities and and folding that into another committee as well as elevating the Jack Hopkins committee to enable it to hear some other things. But I don't think there's a real harm in waiting until next week to just handle all these things together, even though we could have perhaps struck some things and voted on those less controversial items tonight. I'll share my comments on a few of the other proposals. Regarding in housing, housing and climate committees, two committees there, I don't have particularly strong feelings about those proposed changes and, and, you know, would be happy to kind of defer to what others think. I will say that in my mind, neither of those moves diminishes the importance of those issues at all. It just changes who hears them and what group of people, you know. You could have three or four committees, or you could have 20 and still hear all the same things and think they're equally important. It's just a bit of a logistical thing as to who hears what. And and the reasons those proposals came was because the relative paucity of of legislation and duties that that housing and climate had this year. But of course, that may change too. Perhaps a housing committee does want to take up the issue of affordable housing and homelessness and housing first solutions and work on an ongoing, you know, work session type of fashion with county colleagues and city staff and, you know, boards of trustees. Perhaps the Climate Action Committee would like to do something similar, and of course, we do have a Climate Action Plan coming soon, and the council does have some prescribed duties through that plan that that it will be responsible for helping to implement legislative changes in line with the plan over time. So so maybe it makes a lot of sense to keep those separate and as they are. Again, I don't have strong feelings about it. Regarding the sidewalk committee, I appreciate Mr. Stossberg's comments tonight. I'm not sure if every council member has had a chance to read his report or not. He's right that it is a very data-driven and detailed and thorough report called the Equity Audit Report on sidewalks funded by the sidewalk or funded by the sidewalk committee that was sent an email to all of us on November 10th, if you need to highlight it again. I found it fairly compelling. I think Councilmember Rosenberg's analogy to us not deciding, for instance, which streets get repaved is a good one. You could think of others as well. It's, it's sometimes we talk about not micromanaging staff, and I think this perhaps is one of those examples. That's not to undermine or de-emphasize the importance of sidewalks, of course. I wish we funded that at a significantly higher level than we do, and I including through TIF bonding, for instance, and I think those are things we can continue to advocate for with the administration through the budget process and otherwise, as well as through, you know, a committee like the Transportation Committee. But I think the the report laid out good reasons as to why the folks with the most expertise in this should be making the the sort of decisions about the the details of it, the implementation. Also worth noting, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission recently voted unanimously that the council should follow the recommendations of Mr. Stossberg's report in in changing how that that money is allocated, not the amount of money or the priority of sidewalks, but just how that's allocated. So that's how I feel about that particular proposal. I will say, even if it's the will of the council not to change who is hearing or sorry, who is deciding how the sidewalk fund is spent, I do think it's a good idea regardless to fold the sidewalk committee into the Transportation Committee. We have and have that committee after this round, of course, after this round is done. We have a number of committees that have sort of large purviews or large things in their purview, a large set of things, and sidewalks very clearly fit neatly under the transportation umbrella. We didn't have that before. Transportation Committee didn't exist, but it does now, and and it's a fairly active committee. And having sidewalks as part of their purview, if we retain council decision-making over sidewalk fund, I think is a good idea. Finally, just a note on the broader, you know, topic we're discussing of committees, since since Councilmember Smith brought it up as well. Just regarding, you know, a frame of reference or do we have a comparison, I will just note that we heard a fair amount of legislation as committee of the whole last year. So we did do that. We, even the newer council members know what that's like. That tool is still available to us, and indeed, I hope actually we can move towards hearing some things just at a first and second reading and skipping committee of the whole this year is another possible, you know, possibility for some things. So I look forward to continuing to. So I look forward to continuing to refine all these things with my colleagues and city staff, of course, over time. And I think that concludes my comments and thoughts on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you, President Sims. Just a couple of comments. One is that if there's a data-driven report, I would refer to the report that we received from our staff some weeks ago, a few weeks ago, on the utility and the expense in terms of time and effort of having standing committees at all. And so, you know, that made a very compelling case to me that we should return to our previously, I think, well-functioning Committee of the Whole. We've had a very extensive debate. It's obvious that I think what we're doing is reducing the number of standing committees. I would propose that we reduce them to essentially the, what we were experiencing for many years in this council, which is the Committee of the Whole, where we have the input of the entire council and we don't have it balkanized to where, you know, individuals essentially have their particular, you know, committee areas of expertise, but everybody has essentially bite at the apple. So, but regarding the sidewalk report, I don't, I think Mr. Stossberg has some good data there. I think what's lacking is contextual and historical information, also referencing other documents within the city. So for instance, it would be helpful to determine, you know, why a particular area of sidewalks was decided on by the Sidewalk Committee. And if you were to, you know, read the minutes of deliberations, you would find that some of them worked very well within, for instance, the Alternative Transportation Greenways Plan, which was not just decided by the council, but was decided by staff and the public and by head committee and commission and so forth. So there's also lack of contextualization in terms of, you know, where the paucity of sidewalks were established because of a general trend among developers not to be held to to implement either stormwater or sidewalks from a period of 1960s, 70s and into the 80s, which left some neighborhoods just completely underserved. And then there's a lack of contextualization in terms of where other pedestrian services are available. So for instance, this council, as well as, you know, federal and state funding, put a lot of money into the B-line, which serves certain districts but doesn't serve others. So, you know, although the report, I think, is helpful, it's lacking in many, many details. And I think that it would be good to debate it because I think that clearly it's gotten attention of people, but I think that it's flawed in many ways. And I think that we need to use it as we would any document which has something to add but isn't definitive. In terms of control of sidewalk funds, I think it would be a total mistake to turn that over to staff. That is, in my experience, very hard-won funding that has been advocated by council members for many years. And we've gotten up to $330,000, which sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't really, in terms of manifesting sidewalks, doesn't give you much. If there's one reform that I would say is needed in sidewalk funding, it's to take out very large projects that should find funding elsewhere because we would, you know, we can't possibly address sidewalks that are miles long unless we apply the entire sidewalk fund for many years. And so this is not the intent of the sidewalk, a council sidewalk committee funding to do these very large projects. I think that it really, what it does is it puts the funding back, of course, the administration, which has their own priorities, takes power away from the council, which I think is a total mistake. And it also kind of severs that communication between constituents and council members to really go out and find out, you know, what's lacking within particular districts around the city, which the staff isn't always equipped to do, but of course, we do it. And so it's, I think it's served well. I think the projects have been good and I don't see any reason why we need to abolish it or turn it into something else. I think the Transportation Committee or the Committee of the Whole has plenty of work to do with, you know, taking on sidewalk, the sidewalk topic as well. But, you know, we can, we can, we can debate that, of course, further. But so that my two senses, I think, based upon the staff report, I think that we should seriously entertain returning to the Committee of the Whole, which a number of us were favorable to last time. And perhaps now that we've evaluated 10 months on, we can, you know, it's now, we can point to data and say it was working pretty well to begin with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Other final comment from council members? Francis, be your second bite at apple. Let me see if we got anyone else or anyone else. Councilmember Volin.
Yes, I appreciate some of the feedback. I do think resolution was designed to be easily amended by stripping undesirable. And I also want to point out, there's going to be a few people who are going to change committee assignments. We should be reevaluating every year what committees we serve on. We don't have to randomize who sits on what committee in order to reevaluate once a year. I think there's going to be a few people who want to change committees. I want to swap out a couple. I want to stay on most of the ones that I'm on. And I want to concur with the idea that we did, in fact, use Committee of the Whole in 2020 several times, especially at the beginning of the pandemic. I did agree that it was more appropriate to use the Committee of the Whole. But I continue to be dumbfounded by Councilmember Rallo's intransigence on this point. In particular, that Committee of the Whole was always supposed to be an exceptional tool in the parliamentary tool chest, not the order of the day for everything. He's utterly mischaracterizing. I'm glad that he got to enjoy that his average meeting last year was 20 minutes shorter under committee system than it would have been in prior years. So I think he's seeing what he wants to see in the committee system. I can't hide my disappointment. I do not understand why he's so intransigent about it. But getting to the substance of the issue, I think Councilmember Smith had some interesting point. I think that would be a perfectly appropriate place to address issues of homelessness. I was encouraged by Councilmember Sandberg having no objection.
Point of order. I'm sorry, Councilmember Volin. We're missing, every once in a while, we're missing some words that you say, so.
Oh. I don't know where you heard last, but.
It's been happening, it's been happening all night. Just got a weak signal, so if you could finish, we'll move forward.
I'll try to speak a little slower. Councilmember Smith is interested in new committees. I think we, I've already addressed the question of homelessness in this proposal. His idea for a finance committee is one that I deeply considered at the beginning of last year. And I decided against it at the time because we needed to try the committee system first. But Councilmember Smith is really getting at the true power of committees if we were to start a finance committee. Many members of council last year expressed their dismay at the budget. And we've seen that other cities, especially South Bend, have a dramatically different approach to budgeting that we would do well to think about. But that's only possible within a committee system. So I completely disagree with Councilmember Rallo that we should go back to Committee of the Whole. I completely disagree with his assessment of the report, which I thought was at best wash, if not encouraging. And I want to emphasize one more time that the secondary purpose of committees was oversight. It was a close second, but the primary function of committees was critical to better handle legislation while still preserving the prerogatives of members and their ability to meet actions to oversee city business. By our 2020 experience, a couple of committees simply proved to be impractical for that purpose. That's why I brought this legislation forward. The point of tonight was to get you all to reevaluate the initial choices. It's clear that some committees work better than others. Let's fix them. I look forward to seeing what people say next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg.
Mr. President, is this time an appropriate time to make the motion for postponed moment?
After I make a final comment, I think it would be appropriate. Is there any other finals before I finish up? Okay, thank you. First of all, I think it's important to remember, this discussion is important. And I think the reason why, and I know some folks don't particularly care when I say this, but when we created these, the vote to create them was five to four. So I think that lends itself to evaluation and discussion to move forward. Me, myself, I, and I'm glad to hear that we have not forgotten about the Committee of the Whole. And I'm quite sure we'll be using it for app boards, moving further, as our controller has suggested. But I personally prefer the Committee of the Whole. I was not in support of standing committees when they were created, but I think those of us that were in the minority still work to try to make it work. Initially, it would be my preference to just abolish them. But the fact is, there are some merit in some of these standing committees. When I was considering to run for this office, I talked to each and every one of our colleagues. And I will credit, at least initially, Councilmember Flaherty with coming up with the concept of hybrids, of some sort of a hybrid model of standing committees. Intrigued me a little bit. I think that lends itself to being a little bit more collaborative. So, and I think that's the importance of having this conversation. Another one reason I wanted to delay, I think this is a good idea, is that it gives us time. I'm not so sure about everyone else, but I, it was in a packet Friday. I probably don't look at it in any detail until, or I'll see it Saturday, maybe look at it in some detail on Sunday. So I think time is warranted. I've heard that there may be amendments, there may be some changes. So I think that's, I think it's appropriate to do that. When I discussed this initially with the sponsor, it was told to me that A, it would take another resolution to undo whatever it is we decided tonight. But it seemed to me the more efficient thing to do would be to offer amendments, which I didn't think was timely enough to do at that time. So it seems to me the best thing is to just delay it for a week. And I think I hear that from our colleagues, so we can give it more thought, make some amendments if possible, or even to consider to continue that. The Sidewalk Committee, I have been in some communication with Mr. Stossberg, and I don't want anything to be mischaracterized. It was a very data-driven report. But verbally, some of the things that I've heard is that, and he's been in the Council Sidewalk Committee meetings. He's heard the planning and transportation staff say that they're in a process of revamping and updating their criteria, using some GIS technology and looking at some equity issues. And I think he is in support of that, at least that's what I'm understanding. And those are the main things that I gleaned from the report. There's other things and there's other things that's been said. But I think he has deferred to, at this point, to let's see what planning and transportation will come up with since they are, have agreed to look at these new criteria. And I think that's about it tonight. I think, and I appreciate all the dialogue. The last thing I will leave you with is when we're talking about this legislation, and I am not trying to be accusatory, I'm not trying to be adversarial, but when we're talking about legislation, some of the things I don't particularly like hearing or dealing with is terms like quick and dirty. I'm agnostic to it. I'm not wedded to any of this. I think it needs to be more thorough. I think you have to be direct to it. And I think you need to be wedded to some of these things. And I also think what we should consider is that we're changing leadership as well. So I think that is, has something to note with that. And with that, Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. I would move to postpone this resolution for further discussion and a vote to our January 13th meeting.
All right, it's been properly moved in second. Council, I'm sorry. Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg? I'm sorry, Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you. And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes. Motion to postpone nine to zero. Okay, thank you all for that robust discussion. Moving to the next item, appointments to committees, boards and commissions. Mr. Lucas. We're here. Those are in two different, or two separate items, one and two. One is the council action by motions of the council and others presidential appointments. Obviously, the presidential appointments has to do with committees and we won't deal with that this evening. And the approach being, to approach these committees that are, are actions by motion of the council and how, and I was listening earlier, but it's getting later in the night. So what is the process for this?
And perhaps the maker of the motion might also want to chime in, but as I understand it, members would be free to indicate their interest in serving on any of the commissions or boards that the council makes an appointment to. Certainly, members who are currently serving may want to express their interest in continuing service. And I believe the motion allowed for a slate of candidates to be voted on by one vote if there was only one such interested council member. If there was more than one council member interested, I believe the motion allowed for the council to vote on each of those appointments individually.
Okay, thank you. So is the proper thing to get started to go down through the list of actions by the council or motions that are required by the council and to see who is interested in remaining or continue serving and then see where we are after that?
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Volin.
So the council has traditionally, on this day, renamed every seat. But in the course of preparing for tonight, we found, after much research by Mr. Lucas, that some of the seats that we are assigned are for two- or four-year terms by statute. And I don't think that any of us voted on the slate last year of assignments to boards and commissions with that understanding. It's my opinion that we should, that every seat should be voted on. I mean, that no member should see the seat that they have had as being somehow theirs until it's voted on tonight. And then in future years, I mean, as long as everyone is aware that some seats are two-year term. And then in future years, I mean, as long as everyone is aware that some seats are two-year terms, and we didn't know that before because we're used to changing it. Most seats, members serve at the pleasure of the council, but a couple don't. So with that, I recommend that not only the member who currently has a seat be asked if they are interested in continuing to serve in it, but any other member who would like to serve on a seat, be, be asked at the same time if they would like to serve. And then those that are contested will vote on after those that are not contested. Thank you.
And that was the intent and gist of what I said and what you and I talked about earlier. So, thank you. So we'll go down the list. Those that are continuing to serve, and if there is no one else interested in that seat, then I think we can agree on that and then vote on them later. If there's a contested seat, then we'll separate that and deal with those contested positions. Is that proper, Mr. Lucas?
I believe so, yes. The contested seat, as Councilman Volan alluded to, it may be a case where because the term start and end dates for a given seat weren't immediately apparent, it may be something the council would be better served postponing until next week to provide more time to gather information. But I can perhaps provide more detail when we get to any of the contested seats.
With regard to terms?
For example, I'll pick one of the boards. The Urban Enterprise Association has a four-year term, and statute governing that board allows for the removal of one of its members for cause. And it's not immediately apparent because the council has, as Councilmember Volan noted, I looked and going back until the early 1990s, has made these appointments on an annual basis. So it wasn't immediately clear, for example, when that four-year term should have started and ended. So it's unclear where some of these terms kind of are at the moment, if that makes any sense.
Well, it does, but I guess I'm wondering what does that affect to people who are currently in those position and wanted to continue if they're not contested?
So what I will say is I don't see any issue with unnecessarily reappointing someone, so, you know.
Thank you.
Here's, the council has made these annual appointments. Perhaps unnecessarily, in some cases, I don't see any issue with reappointing the same member. It's in those cases where there is more than one interested council member. It's not clear whether the term for the particular seat is up or not, and there may be rules regarding when a member can be removed, that it could be an issue.
So is it your opinion that we can do what I said tonight and go forward? Or should we wait to get a clearer idea on, on terms of these commissions?
I think it would be fine to go through and see which seats are contested or not.
Thank you. Okay.
From there.
All right. Everyone, if we can go down the list. We're, we're down to Citizens Advisory Committee and Social Services, and that's Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue serving.
Okay, is anyone else interested in serving in that position? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Rosenbarger, Citizens Advisory Committee, Physical Improvement.
Yes, I would like to keep that.
Thank you. Anyone else interested in that seat? Thank you. Commission for Downtown Bloomington, DBI, Councilmember Scamblerie.
Happy to continue serving.
Okay, any other council members interested in that seat or at service? Seeing none, moving to Economic Development Commission for the city, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I'd like to stay there.
Fantastic. Is there anyone else interested in serving in that position? Thank you. Economic Development Commission for the county, Councilmember Smith.
I'm happy to remain a representative of the city council. Thank you.
And a fine representative you are, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else interested in serving in that position? Okay, seeing none, moving down to Environmental Resource Advisory Council, Councilmember Scamblerie.
Happy to continue serving.
Thank you. Any other council member interested in serving?
Commission as well, or that advisory council, rather.
The Environmental Resources Advisory Council. Okay.
Councilmember.
Any other, yes, ma'am.
I would happily defer to Councilmember Flaherty on that, too. I know he has some expertise in that area. And I have always appreciated his insights in that area, so I would be happy to defer to him on that. Councilmember Flaherty, acceptable to you?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. So Environmental Resource Advisory Council, Councilmember Flaherty. Anyone else interested? Okay, seeing none, moving on. The NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. Councilmember Flaherty.
I'm actually interested in not continuing in that capacity this year, if another council member is willing.
Okay, is any other council member interested in serving in that position? Councilmember Volan?
I would be interested, yes.
Thank you. Is any other council member interested in serving or contesting that? Seeing none, congratulations, Councilmember Volan.
We haven't voted yet. I might still lose it.
Since you're running against yourself, that's very possible. Plan, Plan Commission, current is Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I would very much like to continue service.
Thank you. Any other council member, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, interested in serving, contesting that?
Yes, I, well, we have an opportunity to make a statement before the vote.
I believe we have discussed it, I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Sims, President.
Yes.
I'm not sure, I may be looking at a different list than you. I feel like we've skipped a couple, maybe Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission and Parking Commission. Perhaps we're looking at different lists.
He is looking at an older list, it's in a different alphabetical order. He'll get to it.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, let me know if I missed something.
That's the answer.
DB, oh yeah, well, oh, you're right. No, I'm going down the 2020 list to, because that's whose names are on it, we're, that's occupied now. So when we get down, I hope I don't miss anything, but thank you. Okay, now Solid Waste Management District, that's Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Are you interested in continuing to serve there?
Yes, I would like to continue to serve, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other council member that would be interested in that service or contesting that? Okay, thank you. BUEA, Board of Urban Enterprise Association, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I'm okay keeping that.
Okay, is there any other council person who is interested in the BUEA appointment? Or council action, I should say. Okay, seeing none, thank you. Utility Service Board Ex officio. I am currently in that position, and I would prefer to continue. Is there anyone else interested in the Utility Service Board Ex officio position? It's so much fun, you don't know what you're missing. Okay, thank you all, I'll continue there. Bloomington Economic Development Commission. On my 2020 list, it had Councilmember Rosenbarger's name on it, but I was assigned to that last year. So I think that was just a correction or a misprint. However, the BEDC, I would still be interested in continuing that service. Is there any other council member that'd be interested in BEDC? Okay, seeing none, moving down the list. Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, Councilmember Rallo was there last year.
I'm happy to remain.
Thank you. Say any other council.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm also interested in BCA.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Rallo and Councilmember Flaherty, when we get back to that, thank you. Parking Commission, Councilmember Volan was in that service. Would you care to continue with that, sir?
I would.
Is there any other council member interested in that service? Okay, thank you. Moving down to the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee. Last year was Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Scamblerie, Sims, and Smith. We'll start with Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I don't mind continuing.
Thank you, thank you, did a very good job there, thank you. Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, I would prefer to remain on that.
I would also care to remain as well.
You got it, and I was on there as well, and I'd like to remain. Of those four, is there any of the remaining five that would be interested in the PS Lit Committee? Okay, seeing none, moving down to the Monroe County Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission. That was Councilmember Volan last year, I think you've indicated you.
I, I would serve, but I do not feel the need to this year. I would be happy to defer to somebody else. But I'll continue if nobody else wants to.
I'd be interested in it, too. Oh, Sue, you want to do it?
I'm.
It's a competition.
I am going to serve in that role, I don't feel a need to, but I think it's an interesting role and an important one that ties to the work involved in downtown Bloomington.
So Steve, you decline, or Councilmember Volan?
I would be happy to defer to another member.
Okay, and Councilmember Smith, you're interested as well?
I'm happy to defer.
Oh, thank you. I find that, that area is fascinating.
Yes, it goes right into the collaborative and collegial part, I love that, too. Okay. There is, I have my count one, two seats that would be contested. And just so that we're clear on here. Stephen, or Mr. Lucas, should I read through all this again, just to make sure we're all clear on this? Or just, or just remove the two that are contested?
I would suggest reading through the slate of uncontested seats one, one more time before taking a vote on all of those at the same time. The two contested seats, I believe one was Plan Commission, and the other was the Commission on Sustainability. With regard to the Commission on Sustainability, I believe that's a two-year term. Our local code does include a provision that says members can only be removed for cause. That is one of the conditions I would recommend holding off on until next week to determine where in the term we currently are, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Is it proper to ask Councilmember Rallo, how many years he's been on there?
Since its inception. I don't remember. But let me say that I think that Councilmember Flaherty would serve very well. And so I'll defer to Councilmember Flaherty if he would like to be appointed.
Sure.
Say you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure.
Okay.
I appreciate your service, Councilmember Rallo as well, obviously, for many years on the commission.
Thank you.
Here, here. So that just leaves Plan Commission as contested. Okay, as I go down through the list, correct me if I'm wrong. Citizens Advisory Committee, which is CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, Social Services Position, Councilmember Smith, Physical Improvements, Councilmember Rosenbarger, DBI, or Downtown Bloomington, Councilmember Scamblerie, Economic Development Commission, the city, Councilmember Rosenbarger, Economic Development Commission for the county, Councilmember Smith, Environmental Resources Advisory Council, Councilmember Flaherty, Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPO, Councilmember Volan, Solid Waste Management District, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Board of Urban Enterprise Association, BUEA, Councilmember Rosenbarger, Utility Service Board Ex officio, Councilmember Sims, Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, BEDC, Councilmember Sims, Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, Councilmember Flaherty. So there's no concern, Mr. Lucas, on the two-year term there with that? Okay, thank you, and thank you for serving, Councilmember Flaherty. Parking Commission, Councilmember Volan, PS Lit Committee for council members, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, Councilmember Scamblerie, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Sims, and Monroe County Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, Councilmember Smith. Did I get those correct? Okay. Now, should we vote on those and then go to the Plan Commission? Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger has to hand up President Sims.
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thanks. I just, I was tallying while you were saying all that, and I'm just wondering, you know, I have three, and I'm definitely willing to give some up just because, I mean, I'm sorry, we already went through it, but just because I know some, it looks like some council members now don't have any appointments. And so I wonder if we want to just make sure things are a little evenly distributed also. I mean, just so everyone gets out there and does their part liaising for us.
If there's anyone, any council member either that don't have a position on assignment, how do you feel about that?
Just wondering if anyone would like one of mine, I'm sorry.
All right, Councilmember Scamblerie.
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger, if you are interested in giving one up, I would be interested in the Economic Development Commission, but I'm also happy if that's one you want to hang on to.
I, well, actually, I know when I'm in the middle of a project that I wouldn't mind following through with, so I'll just keep that one. Yeah, abatement guidelines. I have the BUEA, which is similar and really awesome, doing great stuff. It's mostly in district lines, the, the urban enterprise zone, but also happy to share that if anyone wants to get in on, you know, worker career development and business, small business development.
Councilmember Volan, did you have your hand up on something? Okay, Councilmember Scamblerie.
No, if you're, if you're interested in giving up the UEA, I would be happy to take that. I'm very interested in issues of economic development. But I will also defer to my colleagues who don't have as many appointments as they might want.
Is that one you're willing to give up, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay giving that away. I love everyone there, but I'm also okay letting someone else use that.
I've heard they all love you as well.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Scamblerie, will you accept that?
I will, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any more? Go ahead, Councilmember Rosenbarger, we missed something.
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask, like, is it, do some council members not have any appointments right now?
If they did not, or hadn't agreed to continue on and did not ask to serve on other, I guess that could be. I haven't, I can't see it right now, just looking at it, if they don't have any. Now, this is just one part of the council actions. We still have the president-appointed committees in those positions after next week. So to answer your question, I think there very well could be. As I look down the list real quick, it looks like. As I look down the list real quick, it looks like maybe Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, I have no, no appointments on this list, but I would like to have a consideration of appointments on other, another committee.
Yes. Okay, are we good with that? Councilmember, Councilmember Lucas, I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, I, I was doing something else, and I think I heard a discussion about the BUEA appointment, and I wanted to clarify that maybe this is my own ignorance. I don't know if Councilmember Scamblerie's district includes any of the urban enterprise zone, which is a requirement for the council rep on that board.
That's a good point. I don't think any of the urban enterprise areas are.
Thank you.
So I may not be able to serve in that role.
Councilmember Volan.
If I remember correctly, Districts one and six are the only ones that have the urban enterprise zone. That's pretty limiting. Could, can an at-large member not serve? What, is that really a requirement that it's a district rep?
So the statute calls for one member of the municipality's legislative body whose district includes all or part of the zone, so I would read that to mean the at-large members or any district representative's districts include all or part of the zone.
I'm going to take, try to see if I can pull up the map of the zone so I can see if it, if there are any other districts that are eligible while we're doing this. Thank you.
You mean other than one and six?
Yeah.
And at large?
There might be, yeah, there might be others. I'll see. Don't wait for me, though. Go on.
Well, well, Mr. Lucas, we'll probably need to wait for that one to be, before we vote on the uncontested ones. Is it proper now to move on to the Plan Commission? And do it, and do it separately since we're not voting on the others?
Sure, that, if the council.
That work?
I, I will note for the Plan Commission, I've changed statutes. Give me just one moment. The council's appointment to the Plan Commission statute states that that representative serves a term on the Plan Commission that is coextensive with that member's term on the council, but that the council at its first meeting of a year can appoint someone different. So unlike many of the other appointments, this is one appointment that if the council wanted to make a different choice, it would need to do so tonight. It doesn't need to take any action to, to appoint anyone, but I think, given the council's past practice of making annual appointments, even if the council wanted to have Councilmember Sandberg continue serving it, it could make that clear tonight.
But I think if the council chose to elect her further, we would in fact be doing that, correct? But if we went with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, then we also have that right, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So having said that, for the Plan Commission, I think the proper thing is, if we discuss and correct me if I'm wrong here, do both of you have statements to read, so we won't have a debate. I don't think that's proper, so can we start?
As a, just a point of information, President Sims.
Yes.
Sorry if I missed something. Do we plan to vote on the the uncontested slate tonight?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We're just, we're just. Yeah, we're just swaying on the BUEA.
Oh.
Yeah, those are, those are the easy ones, yes.
So the BUA, the northernmost part of the zone is Seventeenth Street. The southernmost part of the zone goes well into, all the way down to Country Club Lane. It includes the area around Switchyard Park. It also includes Carlisle. Who has, is that Districts five and four?
District five.
Is Carlisle on five, or does it touch four at all?
It's in five. It's close to four, but.
Okay, well, then in that case, Councilmember Piedmont Smith is also eligible, as are I, Councilmember Rosenberg, and the three at-larges. Thank you.
So Volan Rosenberg and Piedmont Smith is eligible?
Yes.
Okay, and of those three?
And the at-large.
And the at-large.
Including at-large, yes. Of, of those six, who would be interested in serving on the BUEA? Going once.
I can also keep it. I was just trying to be more equitable in distribution.
Okay, thank you. Any of the at-large colleagues interested? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Rosenberg. So now, Mr. Lucas, since all those are done, says it proper that they're going and make a motion for those now?
Yes, I, I think a motion to appoint the slate of representatives that you read off would be the appropriate motion.
Mr. Flaherty, would you mind?
Mr. President, I move we adopt the appointments to boards, commissions and committees as, as you just read, and vote on those as a slate.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. This won't change the motion, but these are all uncontested seats. So it's been properly moved and second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo? Rallo? And Volan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rallo must have stepped away, so that passes eight zero. Okay, moving to the Plan Commission, which is a contested seat, and we'll start with a statement from Councilmember Piedmont Smith, please.
Thank you. I would very much like to serve on the Plan Commission because of my long-term experience in planning issues and my active participation in drafting the documents that underlie our planning decisions. That is, the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Long before I served my first term on the City Council, I was involved as a concerned citizen in the drafting of the first growth policies plan in 2002. Then I was a member of the Environmental Commission for four years with one year as chair and participated in the review of many development proposals while advocating for local greenhouse gas reductions and environmental protections. During my first term on council, I served on the Plan Commission for two and a half years, and I have served for two years during my second term as well. I'm now on my third term. I was very hands-on while the Comprehensive Plan was being discussed by the Plan Commission and the City Council. I authored or co-authored seventy-nine amendments that were adopted by the council. These amendments improved the plan by making it easier to follow, by strengthening our commitment to greenhouse gas reduction, and by encouraging transparency in decision-making. When the Comprehensive Plan was translated into city ordinance through the UDO, I was also very engaged, bringing forward thirty-three amendments, mostly to improve environmental protections. When the transportation plan was added a few months later, I sponsored twenty-four amendments to help bring greater clarity to the document. I always aim to make our public documents user-friendly for city staff, for elected officials, and most of all, for the public. The Council Land Use Committee, as you know, was formed in 2018 largely due to a few planned unit development petitions that took up an inordinate amount of council time the previous year. I have served on the Land Use Committee since its inception, and I chaired the committee last year in 2020. I think it would be quite helpful to have the council's representative on the Plan Commission also serve on the Land Use Committee to help council colleagues understand the issues discussed at Plan Commission. If selected for the Plan Commission this year, I would like to continue to serve on the Land Use Committee to serve this liaison role. Another liaison position that is useful in planning the built environment for our community is the City Plan Commission's non-voting appointment to the County Plan Commission. That Plan Commission member is selected by the members of the Plan Commission annually. If I were to be selected by you, my council colleagues, to serve on the Plan Commission, I would volunteer to serve as liaison with the County Plan Commission, and then, of course, that would be up to the whole Plan Commission to determine whether they wanted me to be that representative. In any case, I plan to attend as many County Plan Commission meetings this year as I can because affordable housing, urban sprawl and efficient land use are not issues that stop at city borders. And in particular this year, with annexation being back on the table, communication with our colleagues in county government in regard to planning will be essential. I expect the Plan Commission will take up an issue of very large importance to many Bloomington residents early this year, and that is how to map the new higher-density R4 residential zoning district. I've been engaged in conversations with constituents, staff and housing experts on this issue, and I look forward to seeing the city staff's revised proposal later this month. I'm hopeful that we can increase residential density in our city without damaging the older neighborhoods closer to downtown and to campus. We need to take our time with this issue, evaluate existing research and focus on goals that we have in common. Councilmember Sandberg has served the community well on the Plan Commission for the last three years. I served in 2016 and 2017, and frankly, I needed a break after the comp plan work, and I was happy to have my colleague take over. However, the council appointment to the Plan Commission is so important that it should not become the hegemony of one council member. I realized just this week, like many of my colleagues, that a Plan Commission appointment should, according to statute, be coextensive with a member's term on the council. That means that technically, one council member should have served January 2016 through December 2019, and a new council member should serve January 2020 through December 2023. But according to state code, the council also has the right to appoint a different representative to the PC any given year. Councilmember Sandberg has served the last three years, so two years of her previous term and one year of her current term. I now ask my colleagues to consider that it's time for a change and that I'm both interested in and well-qualified for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith is certainly well-qualified to take this position, but I think that she and I have two different approaches to our service on the Plan Commission. Having served as a dedicated member of the Plan Commission during both the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance finalizations, I feel strongly about remaining this year as the critically important zone maps are debated and recommended to council. The transition from visioning to developing code is not complete until the neighborhoods have an opportunity to weigh in with respect to housing affordability, sustainability and livability. The important balance between rental and owner-occupied properties will need to be struck to preserve the best of Bloomington neighborhoods while looking to meet the needs for new and affordable housing options. I have been a responsible and collegial representative in this community debate and hope to continue in the spirit of civility and civic participation. With respect to the council representative also being a mandatory member of the Land Use Committee, I have resisted that additional assignment as I see it as duplicative. The service duties on the Plan Commission and the City Council are separate, with the Plan Commission being the first body to review planned staff assessments and pass recommendations on to the council as a whole. As I have seen the Land Use Committee as being yet another layer of review, I have been satisfied with other members of council having that opportunity before it comes to all nine of us to cast final votes on petitions for new developments and reuse. On Plan Commission, the first task is to review projects through the frame of the criteria established in the UDO, including environmental integrity, housing needs, neighborhood stabilization, community benefit, transportation and traffic impacts, and many other code considerations. The planning and transportation staff and the Environmental Commission evaluate projects before they come to the Plan Commission for further review. We examine if the project is appropriate to code, or are there issues that need further work before the development is worthy of recommendation to council? Does the project warrant a green light, or is it rejected due to not meeting established criteria? At the council level, we can request additional conditions and make recommendations before a project is given final approval. As we are all in the first year of the UDO being adopted, continuity in decision-making in this transitional year is a positive in my favor. As to that large council representative, I share the perspective of looking at development issues in the city from a big-picture view. I attend the Plan Commission meetings and work sessions regularly with an open mind, hearing all sides from the staff, the petitioners and the public as projects come forward. I have also been appointed as a member of the BZA, another opportunity for me to hone my decision-making skills with respect to variances that may appear that do not fall neatly within the established UDO. This also gives me a perspective on areas where the UDO may need to be tweaked in the future to more aptly meet the needs of property owners and petitioners in service to the wider Bloomington community. I thank you for your thoughtful consideration. I have thoroughly enjoyed service on the Plan Commission. It is a big job and would appreciate your ongoing support of my dedicated efforts in the coming year as zoning codes are finalized. With this new information about it being something that you would need to do for your entire term, I would also be willing to consider it next year, but taking a look at where things may stand with respect to the zone maps might also actually defer, but that, of course, is a matter left entirely up to you. Thank you, my colleagues.
Thank you both very much. Councilmember Flaherty and Mr. Lucas, you may chime in on this, but is it now time to go to the council vote, or is there another part of the process?
I believe the motion allowed for questions and discussion. Trying to pull that back up. So the motion adopted earlier in the meeting allowed members to ask any questions and to discuss nominations before a final vote is taken, so I think now would be appropriate to to pose any questions or engage in any discussion.
Okay. Having heard Mr. Lucas, do we have any council members that have any questions directed to either of these candidates? Okay, thank you. Mr. Flaherty, go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
May I ask a question of Ms. Sandberg? Just about something she said during her presentation.
According to the motion. Yeah, according to the motion, I would say so. It says members may ask questions and discuss the nominations of any seat.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg, in your statement, you said that you and I approach the Plan Commission work differently, but then you didn't elaborate, so I was just wondering what you meant by that.
Well, I would just ask everyone to review our two statements. You are clearly very hands-on from a technical standpoint, and I am more a larger, big-view thinker. Again, I weigh everything against the frame of what does the UDO dictate for us to do. That is the job at the Plan Commission level. And so I think also with your you know, interest and your ability to serve on the Land Use Committee, you also can use those very, very clear skills in that capacity. But I, I will assure you, I take my job very seriously on the Plan Commission in reading all the packets, which can be quite technical, reviewing the Comprehensive Plan and also the new UDO and making sure that all the votes that I take as a member of the Plan Commission in consideration.
Yeah, I don't doubt that. I just wanted to know what you meant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from any of the other council members? Okay, Councilmember Volan.
Yes, I'd like to ask actually Councilmember Sandberg about.
Yes, I'd like to ask, actually, Councilmember Sandberg about the County Plan Commission. I understand that you're sort of an ex officio there. Can you tell us about what they've been discussing lately? Or what's, you know, on their minds compared to the City Plan Commission?
I had begun as the ex officio to the County Plan Commission and did attend those meetings quite regularly. As an ex officio member, I did not feel comfortable weighing in, but I was there to listen and observe. It was educational because it's a completely different ball of wax than what we do at the city. I did ask not to be that liaison toward the end of the year because our time was taken up so completely by our own UDO that I found also at that time, I was not retired from IU, so I was having to juggle my day job along with the extensive Plan Commission responsibilities, and I asked that I not be the ex officio toward the end of the year as our work got more detailed.
Well, I guess the question was, like, for those meetings that you attended, what was on their minds? What issues were they talking about?
They were dealing with a lot of petitions, you know, a lot of land use petitions of many, many that, you know, had to do with what people intended to do with their county properties. So it was a great learning experience, and I certainly agree that working hand-in-glove with our county colleagues, especially with respect to annexation, is going to be important, but of course, none of those issues were being approached at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you both for your candidness. Councilmember Flaherty, is it proper for the clerk to just call the role and individual council members state their preferences by name?
I think that would work, although actually, I would say, again, the motion that we passed earlier this evening says that members may ask questions and discuss the nominations of any seat before a final vote. I don't know if anyone has any desire to discuss as opposed to ask questions, but we should probably grant that opportunity prior to taking a vote. I wonder if Mr. Lucas has anything to add with regard to that or how we conduct the vote, which is somewhat typical, of course.
Just agreeing with Council President Sims that the clerk can call the role, but instead of yes, no, I think council members should indicate their their vote for one nominee or the other.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council members before we proceed? And thank you for that, Councilmember Flaherty. Okay, seeing none. Adam Clark, will you please call the role? I will remind my colleagues to not yes, no. Please answer with the name of your choice.
Councilmember Scamblerie.
Thanks to both of you for all the talent that you have brought to these issues in the past. I'd like to support Councilmember Sandberg.
Sims?
Councilmember Sandberg.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Piedmont Smith? Piedmont Smith? Oh. I thought you were just repeating what Councilmember Flaherty said. Yes, I vote for myself. Thank you. Smith?
Sandberg.
Sandberg?
Myself.
Ralu?
Both excellent candidates. I cast my vote for Councilmember Sandberg.
Bowlin?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
And Rosenbarger?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
All right, thank you all, and I do appreciate both of your presentations and your previous service. And the results of this is Councilmember Sandberg, five votes; Councilmember Piedmont Smith, four votes. Councilmember Sandberg is this year's City Council's representative to the Plan Commission. Thank you both, and thank you all again. Thank you very much.
I thank you all.
Okay. Anything else on that, Mr. Lucas, before we move on to additional public comment? Fantastic. Now we're moving down to additional public comment. We have a period set aside for, or I guess we have time. Let's see how many folks we have that want to speak first. So this is now public comment. Please indicate if you want to speak by using the raise-hand function on chat or sending us a note. Let's back up. Using the raise-hand function on Zoom or sending us a note on chat, and we will get to you. Did this is items not on the agenda, correct? Okay, and this for items not on the agenda. And I'll let Mr. Lucas let us know who we have.
Yes, first up, we have Jay, who should be unmuted now.
Hey, guys. So this is Jana Arthur again. I'm gonna let Jesse Graves talk if he wants to. He may not want to now. Do you want to talk? Okay, I'm gonna let Jesse Graves speak for the record. He's a veteran, and here he is.
I'm sorry. I'm Jesse Ray Graves. I'm muted. So please forgive me if I say something wrong, but I have been a service for nine years. You know, eleven. I got a few disagreements on when it comes to, you know, the homeless. So actually, you know, we're all equal, you know. But just for me being a superior of a home or superior homeless, as I would say, I just don't quite understand how the boards will decisions or whoever it is that makes the decisions at the end for all of us or individuals just for the fact that how are we able to be, how my, just me, just for example, why have I served for the country honorably, but I'm still homeless out here and on not being provoked or helped in any other manners that I feel that not know? Or maybe I'm just not being told in that manner what I could get. I don't know if I'm deciding, but I'm trying. But I just don't, I feel that maybe that we all should be compatible in a way to where, you know, you know, our country is under trust and helping little. So I gave that. I gave that to every one of us, every one of you, everyone around us, and along the many of us. But I just want everybody to know that I feel like I've been pushed along with others, aiming with the homeless as well.
Jay.
And it bothers me, but I'd like to know if possibly.
Yeah, I think that was your time. Was that the end of his time?
I don't think so, but your internet's going in and out, so.
Oh, well, so I also have a friend that he's deaf, so we have the, like, teleprompter, so this should be recorded. I have some other people that want to talk.
How much time do we have?
Give me just a second.
How much time do we have?
Well, these are the people that y'all are kicking out a seminary, and everybody's got a problem, and they want to know what I want to do. I just want these people to be able to talk for about five more minutes. I know it's late, but dude, it's cold out here, too. Like, their voices.
Jana, if you just let me check with our attorney, I'll see how much time is left of your five-minute allotment, so.
Well, I will say that the five minutes is typically per speaker.
Per speaker, correct.
There's more than one speaker using the same Zoom account, I think.
Gotcha.
Five minutes per speaker.
You want to talk? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so I would like my own personal five minutes.
Go ahead. Hey, before we go further, how many people you have there with you?
Several, and I've been transporting people to various places, and like, nobody in this town will give me a job, so like, I bankrupted myself and my other friends being homeless, and like, we're still like, looking for gas to like, move. You people are making us leave and like.
Jana, I hate to be rude, but there's many of you there. You have five minutes for everyone that's on this particular call.
Yeah, you guys, go be important politicians. Have a blast. I'm out. Like, this is fucking bullshit. Bye.
Point of order.
Have your meeting. Bye.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, fuck you guys. Bye. I'm trying to get out this call. Somebody boot me because I can't not cuss right now. I'm fucking pissed off. I'm out. I'm mad. Go have your meeting.
Hey, hang on, Jana. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I thought that Council Attorney Lucas just reminded us that each person gets five minutes, not each call.
I think that's correct, subject to a maximum of 25 minutes allotted.
Yeah, but she didn't indicate. She didn't indicate how many was there, so, and we got other hands, so. Jana Arthur, are you still there?
Oh. I'll quickly note also that public comment is limited to one comment per person per night. I saw Mr. Muschler and Mr. Goodlad's hands raised earlier. I would certainly welcome email comments, but your public comment parade for tonight was used earlier, I believe, in those cases.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas, and we proceed.
Yes, and next up, we have Kathy Crabtree, who should now be unmuted.
Hi, I just want to say that was really unbelievable what just happened. It was really clear that Jana had multiple people there and that the attorney said that each one could have five minutes. So, you know, I mean, you need to consider who these people are and what they're going through, and like, give them a break. Though that wasn't what I planned to say, but I just want to throw that out there because I'm really upset by what just happened.
Kathy, before you go further, I'm sorry, this may be improper, but you know me, and this is, we're going through this meeting, you have my apologies, and that will not happen again. I'm just looking for procedure, so.
Yeah.
That was not intentional, so, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I understand, and I don't need your apology. I just think that as a city, as an administration, as a city council, we have to start taking into consideration that not everyone has the same access that we have and that people are struggling. So, you know, you just, not you, the city council just didn't hear from multiple people who are being impacted by the decisions that this administration is making. So I just wanted to, my statement was just, I hope, I think people talked earlier. I was on another meeting, so I didn't hear. But I'm in support of the petition that we not kick the folks out of Seminary Park and that we put that on a moratorium until this pandemic is over, and then we give folks at least a one-month grace period to relocate afterwards. In the meantime, I hope the city will remove trash as they said they were going to do, and I hope they will put in restrooms, portable restrooms for folks, and places to wash their hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crabtree. And again, we have the 25-minute limit. That was, again, my mistake, and we will make sure that is corrected. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
I don't believe so. I, you know, Councilmember Flaherty noted that Mr. Goodla had spoken at the earlier opportunity for public comment tonight. I know his hands raised, but I think he spoke earlier tonight, and I don't see anybody else requesting to speak.
Hey, thank you.
Just a point of order. I do know that occasionally people use the same phone to speak. I don't know if it's worth checking in with Mr. Goodla to make sure it's not someone else on the call who would like to share, but.
Yeah, I do think, given the remote meeting limitations, I think that would be appropriate.
Or Mr. Muschler as well, I see. Again, with having explained that for those two individuals, they made public comment for the evening, and we'd welcome other comments via writing.
Yes. Well, that may have been your answer. I don't see either of their hands raised anymore.
Okay, still in public comment from the public. Still looking if there's anyone who wants to make any comments. Going once, going twice. Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Moving on to council schedule, please.
Yes, so the council has a work session scheduled for this upcoming Friday, and I wanted to get a sense of whether members would be able to attend and what items members might be interested in hearing about at that work session. There are a few items that will be coming to the council over the next couple of legislative cycles. The first is a rezone for a property along 1600 West Fountain Drive that came out of the Plan Commission recently. I believe Comcast is the petitioner for that rezone, and that could be an item previewed at the work session this Friday. The other two items would be historic designation ordinances for two separate properties. One is the Core Building, which is at the corner of Second Rogers, and I believe part of the hospital redevelopment site. And the other is the building that was the former Players Pub. And those three items could be previewed at a work session this Friday, so if members could perhaps indicate whether they'd be able to attend the work session and if there are any items they would not like to hear about, I suppose. Otherwise, I think staff is planning to attend and preview those ordinances.
Okay, can we get a show of hands on those who plan to attend Friday at noon, council work session? And myself as well, so it looks like we have enough to go forth.
All right. I will also note that the Council Sidewalk Committee has a meeting scheduled for next week on Tuesday at noon. That's January the 12th. And obviously, next week, there is a regular session followed by some committee meetings. I will point out that I know after tonight's discussion, the council may be ready to act on Resolution 2101 next week. But just a reminder that any adoption of that resolution by the council would still need to go to the mayor for signature. Resolution wouldn't take effect immediately. So for next week, the standing committees wouldn't be affected by that resolution unless the mayor happened to sign it the same night. So just a note there, and I have no further items to discuss.
Thank you very, very much. Okay. Our entertaining motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to public. Happy New Year. Looking forward to seeing you next week.